I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, Lourdes Estate in New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kennelworth for the year 2023 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source in the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to the meeting. Can we stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Coster.
Here.
Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Cantina.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Mr. LaDoudi.
Here.
Mr. Pellella.
Here.
Mr. Scudari.
Here.
And Mr. Damondo is absent.
Okay. I guess we're here tonight as a courtesy review for the ordinances to 2023-26, 27, and 28, and this is a special meeting. And I think what we need to do is, Kevin, maybe we need to swear you in to let's go over some of the background of what we're talking about here tonight.
Sure, sure.
Kevin, with regard to the ordinances that are being under consideration tonight, you swear that your testimony shall be the truth?
I do.
Okay. Christian, just in case we reach over to engineering, if you could raise your right hand, with regard to these matters, do you swear that any testimony you may give shall be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay. Kevin, you have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Chairman.
It'd be easier that way. Let's get that out of the way, and then we could just move on.
Okay.
It's right.
No, good. Is that the quote?
Yeah, Angela, nice woman. She tells Spencer Thomas.
Thank you, Chairman. I just remember my memo. The Chair spoke to me Friday and thought that it would be a good idea to review the master plan, which is something you talked about in our meeting last month, list the residential goals from the master plan, and to give an opinion as to whether or not the proposed ordinance was consistent with it. I did prepare a memo which went out yesterday and Monday at 4:00, and I did list the various goals of the residential goals of the master plan. Does the Chair wish me to read those goals?
I do. Just if I could interrupt, are we talking about ordinance 2023-27 specifically?
We're talking about the short term of a rental ordinance, which is 20, I'm sorry, whatever you just said, 27?
Yeah.
Does the Board wish to talk about 26 first?
It doesn't matter in what sequence we go, but if you want to go in order, we could talk about 26.
Okay.
Let's go in order, and it makes it easier.
Yeah. I did not prepare anything on 26. This was...
Go ahead. Kevin, we did vote on that.
Yeah, I thought we did.
We voted on 26. We just didn't present it to the Council as being an assistant with the master memo like this, and we voted on it, so.
So I just wanted to touch base on that, okay? On 26, I know we voted on it because then we held over 27 and 28, correct?
Correct.
That's the one for the air conditioning and stuff like that, Mr. Morrow?
Right.
All right. So we voted on that. Can we come back to that at all, or since we voted on it, there is no reason to come back?
Has the Council acted on it?
Has the Council acted on it?
No, we haven't. Tomorrow we will.
They will tomorrow.
There's no reason. I don't think there's any reason why we can't tweak it when we have to.
Okay.
Or wish?
I just had a couple of questions. Since tomorrow is the day, I have a couple of questions for the Board. In reading it through, I don't have a real problem with the air conditioning and everything that was set forth, but there was some verbiage in there. I don't know if anybody picked up on it, and maybe you could clarify for me, somebody on the Board, Mr. Morrow, Kevin. It talked about side yard bocce ball courts, if I am correct. Am I correct? Did it speak to that? Do I have the right one in front of me?
You're referring to language that was probably preexisting in the land use ordinance before this revision or specifically being revised here?
I think it was specifically to that ordinance. Yes, Rich, did you want to say something?
No.
Oh, you're scratching your head? Listen, you could have bit on something by doing it. Okay, so it is number two.
Yeah, so it looks like something about two. Unrelated to the revision we're introducing, but please, what is your concern?
My concern was it says, "Bocce ball court should not be located in the front or side yards and shall be at least five feet from any property line." So I'm wondering, why can't a bocce ball court be on a side yard? Maybe the front yard? Who knows if people are playing in the front? But what is the thought process there? Does anybody know?
Well, one, just for my notification, I mean, a court to me means something you're building. Like, of course, lots of people play bocce ball on the beach, on the lawn, or whatever. That's not a court. You pick it up and you go away. But if you're actually building a bocce ball court, you wouldn't want that in your front yard, Rich. At least I wouldn't.
That's why I'm talking it out. So the bocce ball court in itself is consistent, consists of probably a six-by-six border that goes all the way around, maybe eight foot, 10 foot wide by maybe 20 feet long, and that's how the game is played. Now, if you don't want to see that in a front yard, okay, maybe that makes sense. But on a side yard, why would that be any different than maybe cornhole or another game or an event that somebody would play if they were sitting there playing cards? It's low to the earth. It's not a structure. It doesn't impact anything. I was just trying to get the field.
Aren't most of your side yards like five feet, six feet?
Yeah.
I mean, so I mean, if you're talking about a six-foot thing, now you're right on the property line or you're approaching on someone's privacy.
But they have been made smaller, Nick. I was just wondering.
I'm just going by what you just said.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just thinking about, you know, where is the line drawn? It's not a structure. It doesn't have a footing or a foundation. It's a game. You're restricting residents from playing a game on their side yard.
Well, they're usually the backboards for bocce ball courts in the area you're describing. The ones I grew up with had backboards. They were about three feet high. Yeah, that, I guess, becomes a structure, if you will.
Yes.
But that's, I'm no expert here.
We no longer build them that way. They're just six-by-sixes that may sometimes either of sand, pebble, DGA. Actually, the right way to make them is with oyster shell, and it's ground level. And to restrict them, then where does the restriction stop? Cornhole? Is it pitch and putt? Can you have a catch with your son? You know, it's a fun game. You know, it's a game. I don't know if I'm comfortable with restricting something like that, not because it's called bocce ball and it's more or less a...
I guess it's built for everyone, but it's more of an Italian type of game. Portuguese, Italians, you know, Europeans play this sport or play this game with their children. Yes?
I know where you're going with this, right? And I, you know, I'll just point out, this is not specifically what the Council was asking for, consistent to review the revision. It's existing in there. Can't say why it got in there. I hear what you're saying. I think it's a little outside of the consistency review we're asking for, but if the bocce ball court requirement in this land use ordinance was restricted to courts that require structures to be built, so not what you're describing, right, of somebody just killing the ground. Would you say oyster shell is the right angle to go? So this is policy, I guess, that we can bring back to the Council Committee for Planning and Zoning, and I'm happy to. I mean, is the Board thinking the way Rich is here, that if it doesn't require a structure to be built, why does government need to get in the way? And I can absolutely appreciate that.
Yeah, from my perspective, I didn't even know that you built bocce courts because, you know, what I'm used to playing, I mean, my family played it in the yard, right? So there's no courts, and of course, I see people on the beach playing it all the time. But for me, if there actually is a court, a structure that can be built, I personally don't have a problem with it being restricted because some of the other examples you had, you know, if you're playing catch with your son yard or your daughter, whatever, you're not building a structure. It's two people throwing a ball. Or if you're playing cornhole, it's something that's movable, right? You set up the thing, you play, and then you take it away and you go. But if you build a court, that's something that becomes more or less a permanent structure. And for me, then I wouldn't want it close, you know, any closer than five feet to the property line. Or, you know, a shed is allowed to three feet, I guess. Is that still three feet?
So could the Board be changed to any kind of permanent bocce structure?
It shouldn't just call it bocce, I guess, is the point. Yeah, it should just be any kind of like, any structure.
I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but so when we call it a court, it's because there is a game that's played on a bocce court. The court can be removable. They have portable bocce courts. They have plastic borders that go all the way around, and the guys come out and they play bocce. They're removable. Yes?
Chairman, the zoning ordinance only regulates structures and not behavior. Anybody can play anything anywhere. We don't care. We don't want to get involved with that.
I just don't want to go down the bike where...
But if you build something, the current ordinance is very back in 2015, doesn't want activities in the front or the side yard that are permanent.
That they're a permanent, a permanent structure.
That is all we're talking about.
A permanent structure would either be attached to a house or have a footing and foundation.
No. In zoning, a permanent structure is something that is placed in on the ground.
Give me a shed.
So...
Shed is important.
A bocce court that is installed is a permanent structure.
So would the border around your garden bed, which consists of a six-by-six timber, be a permanent structure?
Yes, but we don't regulate that.
But you would regulate a bocce court?
Well, I don't. The current House has, for 10 years...
Seems silly to me.
This is existing language.
I do not want to see a structure overpowering someone's fence, but you're talking about an elevation of not more than 12 inches from the grass level.
I have no argument about that. If the Board wants to have bocce courts, front, side, backyards, on the roofs, you can put it anywhere you want. But if you're going to go that route, my suggestion would be to do it through the master plan process rather than insert it into an already existing process that at this point has nothing to do with. Because they can't, you can't suggest to them to change the ordinance unless you're going to take some kind of action. And the kind of action you should take should be through the master plan process, which as we know it underlineth.
Good enough, you?
My suggestion. I guess it's good enough for you.
Probably not. The only thing is, Mr. Morrow, is that I don't want to come down to the bike where I've already heard some of this out in the street, is that, oh, can we play cornhole? Can we play volleyball? You know, I want to put two posts in the ground, and can we volley? Well, no, because if that's in a concrete permanent structure, you're not allowed to do that. So are we taking away some of the fun from the residents by putting that in there? I don't know. If anybody's going to enforce that law anyway, like if you're playing bocce ball court, is the bocce ball police coming with the dog guy, you know, and saying, hey, get off my way?
No, but if they have complaints...
Right, when the complaints come.
There's a complaint clause, and that's the issue, right? Someone next to me that have, you know, double bocce ball court with, you know, two-foot-high walls around it.
Then everybody's screaming, yelling, you know.
That's what you got to worry about.
Yeah, I could agree to that. All right, we'll look at that at the master plan level, all right? All right, so for 26, we don't need to do anything.
We don't need to do anything.
We loaded that as consistent.
I just find it at the last out there.
Board meeting, right?
If you're content with as a ten... Yeah, great. Just to note, 27's not on the agenda for tomorrow, so Council has no plans on moving on that. So I appreciate the memo that you gave. I love, here we got to say. But just so the Board knows, there will be no movement on 27 tomorrow, so it dies on the vine, and I think the press will alert Kathy and Rich to this a week ago, but I don't know if the Board got that.
Well, the Council Liaison did send a memo out to the Board Secretary and myself saying that there would be no movement tomorrow on this, but because tomorrow comes after today, we have to stay with the plan of action to still do what we need to do because although Mr. Morrow was saying that they're not going to move on it, if they had a change of heart tomorrow, they could move on it. So we need to actually take a look at this and say, this is what is presented to us. Now, if your planning, if your council meeting was yesterday and you said you weren't going to move on it, then we could have canceled this for tonight.
I'm pretty sure the agenda's published. I mean, it's fine. I mean, the prerogative of the Board, absolutely, but there are no plans to move on this tomorrow. The agenda's published without it being on record, so I guess a resolution could bring it in. I'm not sure how that would work, but it's fine. I just wanted to note that. I know there was a lot of talk about this last time.
Can I ask a question? So there's no plans to move on it tomorrow, but is there plans to move on it in January?
So as I noted to the Chairman and the Secretary in the email I had sent, we are going to go back to this and look at it. I think there were some questions raised on enforcement and what we're able to do, and we had that conversation with the Attorney. I did see the Planner's Memo today. I thought it was eye-opening. I plan on sharing it with the Town Attorney as well, as he's working on this with us, as well as the zoning and code enforcement folks, because we all need to be on the same page. The Board, the Council, the offices here all need to work in harmony, and that's what I plan on doing. So based on feedback and discussion we had, we went back as a subcommittee and talked about it, and we're going to look at this again. So as I was trying to note, last week, we were trying to swing the pendulum over to where I think this Board wanted it to go, absolute outright ban. So there are, Mr. Damondo pulled them up on his phone, we have a number of Airbnbs going on in town, there was a question about enforcement, a question about police being involved, a lot of questions about this. So we moved this pendulum over to highly regulated, which also had this double-edged sword. We have a little revenue problem in town, I think everybody knows. We were going to collect some fees on this as well. But based on the feedback from the Board, I think the sentiment wasn't in misalignment with where the Council Committee actually wanted to go with this, so we're going to go back and bite the apple again. So I appreciate the Board here. I mean, you guys are absolutely partners in this game that we play, which is really no game at all. So we appreciated the commentary, and that's how this is supposed to work, right? So I just know it because there was talk about how long it was, how much time people had to review these types of things. I wanted to make sure that there was notice that we had no plans on moving on this after we came to that decision. So I appreciate everything that Kevin's about to say because we're going to use it in our next steps in what we plan on doing here.
Got you.
And with, Mr. Morrow just explained this 100% correct, and we also had our 35-day deadline, and if we didn't act on this today, then anything could have changed tomorrow. So we need to, as a Board, we do our diligence to make sure that we go forward and give our opinions or what the master plan says, and that's why I asked Kevin to put something together to enlighten us all on where we're going and what we might see next year from the Council. Sheriff, what say?
Thank you, Chairman. So the Chair did request that I read out the residential goals that were adopted unanimously in 2011, as well as, again, in the reexamination we conducted over the last two years in 2022 and 2023. And those goals are, one, protect... Sorry. Protect residential neighborhoods from non-residential encroaches. Two, preserve single-family neighborhoods from any two-family or multifamily encroachment. Three, permit sufficient residential opportunities in locations with access to services to help the boroughs senior residents age in place. Four, allow opportunities for subsidized senior housing. Five, ensure that new residential development is consistent with and compatible to existing neighborhood character. Excuse me. Number six, encourage the preservation and maintenance of all residential properties. Seven, control the illegal conversion of single-family homes into two-family or multifamily buildings through code enforcement. And I believe that those, and asked to take an opinion, I believe that inserting temporary uses and increasing the number of, let's call them families for the moment, the law does recognize that people can be unrelated and still be a family, so if a family, whether it's one person or more, rents out their home or a portion of their home to another family, person, persons. I don't see any language in the master plan that encourages a temporary use or increase into a two-family or more. In fact, there's specific language that really calls out making something from a one-family to a two-family or more. And when you put in a short-term rental, sometimes the owner's present, sometimes not, if an owner is present, you're bringing up a consumer's potential. And we don't deal in numbers usually in Airbnb. They don't ask how many people are coming. They tell you what the combinations are. So if there's two beds or three beds, you can put that many people in. But if there's one bed and you bring three people in, well, the owner really doesn't know unless they're on site. So you're talking about density, which is increasing. Parking was mentioned throughout the draft ordinance and efforts being made to limit the amount of parking, and in fact, included on-street parking as part of those calculations, which as we know, in land use, you can't do because you have no control over that. And you may say on an application to the borough, well, there's three spots in front of my house, but what if you live back in here and your neighbors are in front of your house every night and you have no control over it? In terms of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance did also talk about senior citizens. Senior citizens already have a right in shrine and state law to rent out a room or rooms. So that's an economic development factor that senior citizens have had a right to since the 1970s. So this ordinance doesn't affect that at all and doesn't give them a new right or take away a right. They've got that already. And I think that this expands, adds a use to the borough that is not intentioned. You're allowing a two or more family home to exist in single-family residential areas or, according to the proposed ordinance, anywhere that basically there's an allowed residence. And an allowed residence is, can be shaky ground depending upon, is it a commercial area? Was it granted by ordinance, by marriage, rather? Was it grant followed in? Did it exist before the ordinance? So is it an allowed ordinance, allowed use or not? Somebody's got to define that and make a decision on it. I also threw out to the Board an article I had read in October about the Jersey City experience, because I remember the Council mentioning Jersey City, I think in our last meeting, and they have not had a good experience with this. Now, they are completely different, Paul. You know, they're a six borough. They got a million and a half people over there. They got places all over the place. And in 2019, there were 3,100 listings on Airbnb, and as of early this year, there were almost 154 short-term permits. City says they wrote over a million dollars in fees, and they've actually had to hire somebody at over $100,000 a year to collect those fees. So I just think it's just something to pay attention to because I think it shows the enforcement list is going to be difficult. Somebody's going to have to do this. Somebody mentioned Mr. Damondo looking at the Airbnb listings currently, and I don't know how many he saw, but somebody were to take that list and go after the property owners and inform them they're in violation and encourage them to get a permit. You're talking about a very time-consuming process here. If the borough wants to do that, that's one, but make sure you have the resources to do it and don't dump it on people who are currently overworked already and can't keep up with what's going on. I say that as a form of zoning laws. Very difficult job of enforcement. So those are just some comments that I threw out to the Board based on what I had seen and what I have read, and I welcome any questions. May I ask a question? So as I noted, we have no plans on moving on this, but you mentioned a part about enforcement, and if we go the route of an outright ban, or if the lawyers and everybody agree with your right up here about already being a non-permitted use, okay, we would still need to go code enforcement and zoning officer route, right? We would need to then enforce this, which, double-edged sword, right? You're either going to collect revenue for it or you're going to say you are in violation of an ordinance. So I guess the expense, the work, do you see a way around that, right? We would still need to incur it. Just point out the comment you made about being concerned about it. Well, I have no doubt whatsoever that this is not for allowed use. And anybody, if you're doing some bad math on Council, I'd be more than happy to talk to them. This is not allowed use. It's never been allowed use here.
If I may jump in? I think Mr. Morrow stated, did you want to...
Well, I want to hear your answer on the enforcement piece, because I...
Oh, yeah, because I was going to get involved in that part, but go ahead.
Sorry, Rich.
Go ahead, I'll wait.
The important point you made. Sure. Well, anybody who is doing this is in violation of the ordinance, and the zoning officer has the right and ability to contact them and let them know that they're in violation, give them a chance to correct it, or give them a ticket. Okay, so there's still a touch point where we have to send our code enforcement and zoning officer out there. I'm just, I'm confused by you. You made the comparison about it being costly and time-consuming, but I feel like we have to do it anyway to achieve the goal of the master plan. I said that allowing it, and I made the comment that based on the Jersey City experience... With their volume. With their volume, yes. And I'd love to know what Mr. Damondo saw on Airbnb.
So when he was sitting over there with Mr. Calelo sitting, he looked up something and he says he could see things on there already.
Oh, yeah.
And to that point, what the both of you gentlemen are speaking about is that right now, anybody who is renting out their rooms under Airbnb or any other resource is breaking the law.
That is correct.
And right now, our building department, our zoning department, can't handle the volume of what's coming into that office right now with their staff. Anthony Moncuso is overworked and underpaid. You have another guy, Eddie Gruber, he's on six hours. He's probably putting 12, 15, 18, 20 hours in and only getting paid for six, so he can't enforce it. Now, what the governing body is asking, let's not put it that way. Now, what they're asking us to look at is, let's okay this so we can enforce it. Back when this was presented to us, I asked, who is going to police it? And I think, Mr. Morrow, you said, well, the permit department, the zoning department would have to police it. If they're not policing it now, what makes us think that they can police it later, unless I'm off-base?
A little bit, not much, though. The ordinance was drafted, written, and discussed with the construction office, so we had that conversation about resources available to do something like this. The idea that it would be bringing in specific revenue could then help us with funding Eddie Gruber's increased hours. So we had a discussion, there was a pay-for discussion around all this. We still have to go out there, though, so now there will be no revenue collection from the permitting, but we still want to go out there. I'm not so sure we can't enforce it, Rich. I'll check with the...
I'll check with Anthony on all that. It may take time, but I'm not so sure we can't do it. So that was that. And then the part about the enforcement happening in the first place was a few questions. We recently went through an attorney change for the borough. And we had started this with a prior law firm, then what finished it. And there was a lot of confusion along the way about the ordinance applying, the lawyer working on these things with us. So I don't know where necessarily the ball dropped on this interpretation of what Mr. O'Brien here is so sure of, and I'm going to take this back to everybody, and why things were not being enforced. But there wasn't clarity like this, I guess is the word I would use.
We have two questions out there, Mr. Ladati.
Okay, so as to enforcement, okay, so if this continues, if we say we can't do this, the governing council says, okay, we're not going to, we're going to stop all Airbnbs or any, some type border, border house, whatever issues, or short-term rentals with transient. So if we say it's not, and I'm living next to someone, and all of a sudden I see like three single guys living there, right? I'm going to say, this doesn't seem right, I'm going to go uptown and say, hey, listen, you have an issue here. But now if we say, and this is, I'm just throwing out their ideas, now if we say it's okay, and I know that there's two guys living in there, or three guys, I'm going to say, what can I do? I can't do anything, right? So no one's ever going to.
So you can't go uptown, because we prioritize complaints that residents make.
But it won't be a complaint because you know that that's okay for them to do that, right? If you guys just say it's okay.
No, we're here now saying that it's not okay.
No, no, I say that it's not okay, then I want to go uptown, right?
Well, if you went up, so we don't have to spend time to.
No, no, I agree, I agree.
So I don't want to waste.
No, I'm just bringing up the enforcement issue.
There were steps in there where residents can make grievances for the activities that were going on.
Okay.
We don't have to discuss exactly what they were, it's here. However, if you did see three gentlemen walking into the house, you suspect an Airbnb's going on, you can call code enforcement, we prioritize the complaints that come in. The thing here is though, that we have to be proactive in going on VRBO and Airbnb and the other home sharing networks to find what homes are going to. So this is a two-step process of us being proactive and then going out. First, a complaint coming in and us directly homing in on the.
Can I, can I say something? We do have another question on the floor, Mr. Scadari.
My moral comment, I think the enforcement, if it's not allowed, is far easier and less time-consuming because you're pretty much sitting behind a computer. If you go on Airbnb, you go on VRBO, you go on the other site, you see something posted, you type up a letter, you send it out. If it's still posted, you send them a fine. And I would think the fines are a lot heavier than the permit you need to pay. So you're probably taking in a lot more money with a little bit of enforcement. If you have to physically do a permit, you have to have somebody process that permit, then physically if there's a violation, you have to physically go out to that house to observe the violation, which seems to, and most of the time, you're going to say to somebody, hey, just get, you're not authorized to be in Airbnb, you have to get a permit, which might be $100, or a fine might mean $500 or $100 a day, or wherever it happens.
You make a fair point.
So, Mr. Scadari, if I may, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's a great point because what you, what I'm kind of hearing is, in my layman's terms, is let's enforce what's in place now, let's clean it up. Once it's cleaned up and we can get it clean, then we can entertain how to do this legally at a later date, if it works for us. But right now, we didn't, I don't want to say we don't want to approve Airbnb, but it seems like we already have a problem. We need to clean up the problem.
Mr. Laddati?
Yes.
The ordinance allows $1,000 a day in fines.
A thousand a day.
Sorry, Frank was before. Each day is an individual offense.
I mean, just to cut, it seems like we're going over an ordinance that, or a proposed ordinance that shouldn't have been put in front of us from the beginning. If you already have something in place, the problem now is, okay, a problem has developed between our, you know, our board and the council and our professionals that they get together, we've, by, by taking the time and reviewing this, okay, the problem is not what we thought it was, it's, we already have it, now it's, now it's just, I don't know whether or not we got to give the township any teeth, if the council has to act just in terms of giving teeth to what we currently have in place, but I think we're wasting time reviewing this. The discussion is good because actually we're getting to the bottom of something. If there's a problem in town, we already have it in place, then the discussion becomes, do we change what's in place and allow Airbnbs? You know, if that's a discussion they want to have.
Mr. David?
Yeah, I was going to say, the issue, and it's one that's existed from as long as, you know, I've probably been an adult and paid attention to these things, is enforcement, that's the way I see it, is that you have something that bans it already, and it's a matter of enforcement. I think when Mr. Morrow first brought this to us, there was a feeling, at least at the council level, that, or maybe you, I think maybe you heard it directly from the building department, like, we can't, we can't stop these, we can't enforce these. Yeah, so it's like, why can't we stop? I don't know why, why someone didn't come for an opinion, then maybe that's a possibility, right? Come to the board for an opinion on whether this is banned in the borough or not, that would have been an option and a good one. But, so again, we have a ban in place, we should enforce it, it's up to the governing body to make sure that, you know, our code is enforced throughout the borough. That should happen, and I just, Mr. Scadari made an excellent point in terms of, you know, enforcement and the fact that it's fairly easy to enforce, sit behind a computer, get the violations and start sending out fines. And that's where I was just going to make the point that there's an existing potential revenue stream under the existing ordinance, which could bring in far more money than a permitting process.
It's like a fine line between advertising and action. So if you're advertising for an Airbnb, are you in violation of short-term rentals? If you act on it, you likely are. So just the fact that you've advertised, I think we could put people on notice. I'm not sure you can fine them until it actually happens.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. I'm not saying not.
But I think these are excellent points being raised.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, yeah, you send out an initial thing saying, hey, we see that you're advertising, you should know that this is violation of our code. If we find out that you are actually, you know, renting, fines are going to be coming your way.
Good warning about the fines for violating, in that notice. I think these are great points.
These are two more questions we have, one from Mr. Rego and then one from Mr.
Do we have a, is there a problem in Kenilworth now with short-term rentals, or whatever we call them now?
I have an answer to that, Chairman. As of this moment, there are 25 places in Kenilworth on Airbnb.
So, look at that.
For residents that have.
So there's, at what?
$2.75.
So I'm going to just bring something to your attention. I have a property or two, and I, down in Tom's River, I try to do the same thing, go on Airbnb and, you know, rent my properties. So when I did that, I didn't follow the proper protocol for Airbnb. You have to register with them, you have to do all this kind of work, anybody who's involved in property would know that. I was involved in a lot of property and I didn't know that. And Airbnb wanted to fine me. So I don't know if these people are actually following that protocol or they're getting around it. But if there's 25 units or 25 places in our town that the building department can't get on top of, then that really reinforces my feeling about the ordinance because we need to clean that up first because they're getting away with murder.
Would there be a way to, I know nothing about websites, is there a way, if a municipality doesn't want, or if they say, no Airbnb in our municipality, if I'm a resident of that municipality, isn't there something I can plug in and see if it's even permitted before we even get to them advertising? Because that's like, that's like bailing out a boat without plugging up a hole.
So it was not legal in Jersey City before 2020 again?
Who said that there was a $1,000 fine for an offense where?
There's a $1,000. I did.
Is it a $1,000 enforceable fine?
Per offense, which is per day.
$25,000 a day. The question is whether listing it, whether listing it's a fine or acting on it. If I advertise it and I fill my house, then that's.
Then you talk about intent versus action.
Well, it's got to be.
We're not here to try that case. I think, I think in Mr. Morrow's defense, I would say that I'm glad that there you are, putting this on the back burner for now. And I guess you can see the views of the board and we've kind of exhausted this tonight. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I just, no, I know we're going on tangents with this enforcement stuff, so we're here tonight to either say that we're not going to vote on this or we're going to go on this. And I think a lot of us put a lot of effort in researching this and taking a look at it and reading all the documents that, I'd like to move on it, yes or no, whatever Chairman decides. But I think we're all on tangents, we could be here all night talking about crime and everything else, so.
Mr. Ladati, I agree with you. We tossed it around because we had, we had the necessary time to review the documents, and that's what we said that we were going to do for the governing body, and here we are, we tossed it around, even though we know that they're probably going to throw this out tomorrow and look at it next year. But at least they hear our thought process. Maybe we've enlightened them a little bit too about some of the concerns that they didn't recognize. But I'm also looking at the cost behind everything that's going on, right? So we're cutting a lot of expenses. Are you okay, Kevin?
Yeah.
You sure?
Didn't want to be on the camera, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, sorry for the distraction. I'm also looking at the cost. We have our town attorney preparing these documents, meetings with the city zoning officer and the permit department and the building department, and how much expense is already put into this, how many-page ordinance? That was time cost and a lot of money already spent. So I think we need to recover, or I think the town needs to recover the loss. And let's take a look at this, and I think, as Mr. Ladati said, I think we've exhausted this, and maybe we should vote on it, how we want to vote on it tonight.
Yeah, I was going to say that I agree with Mr. Ladati in terms of we should officially vote on whether we feel this particular ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan or not. And then the only other thing I wanted to point out was, Kevin, again, well, obviously we've had some delays in adopting the new master plan. But in the new master plan, we're saying we don't want this in the borough of Kenilworth. So if we can ever get to passing the new master plan, you know, it would be clear that this is not consistent.
As a policy.
Right. I know we can't use that.
It still may be an ordinance, but.
No, I know.
And I think to cut to the chase, the vote would be, following up on Kevin's memo, is 2023-27 consistent or inconsistent with the master plan based on everything that's been discussed? Kevin's opinion was no, and I think a case has been laid out right now, we should, my view would be to vote yes or no. And then let it simmer a little bit and sort out some decisions.
Can we also say that we, it's brought to our attention that they are, it's already not an allowed use in the township? Don't we put, don't we make that?
That would also be redundant because it's not consistent with the master plan.
It's not consistent.
Exactly. It's already not consistent, it's already not allowed.
But now other issues that need to be sorted out, you know, in terms of that. And I think that would be the way to go, whether they yank the ordinance tomorrow or not, let's just get it on record that we're not thrilled.
Okay. Anyone else on this? Okay, so I guess there should be a motion out there to deny the, deny, pardon, inconsistent, deny the ordinance that is, it is inconsistent with the master plan, 2023-27.
Based on everything that's been discussed.
Based on everything that's been discussed. Someone has to make that motion, and it can't be the Chair. Motion made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Ladati. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boccerna?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
abstaining given my involvement in the issue.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Cantina?
Yes.
Mr. Maggio?
Yes.
Mr. Calelo?
Yes.
Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're on ordinance number 2023-28. Mr., Kevin, let's talk about this one.
Certainly, I had no comment or whatever the other on this, Chairman.
Okay. The board members were supposed to take a look at this and read it over to discuss whether this was something that we thought would fit within our borough as far as the master plan was concerned. I'd hate to hear some comments on what anyone came up with. Someone like you thought?
Yeah, I mean, I reviewed it, but what I'm not clear on is, I mean, there's a lot of different sections that are referenced, is, are, is this meant to allow houses of worship anywhere in the borough? Or is it just changing some definitions? And again, it wasn't clear to me, and I've read the thing, because right now, we have specific zones where houses of worship can exist, and quite frankly, we have six houses of worship in the borough of Kenilworth presently that I'm aware of. And so I, if this is saying it's allowed, we're going to allow it throughout the entire borough, then I don't feel that would be consistent. But I'm not clear on whether that's what this is saying or not, so I don't know.
Can you clear it up, Mr. Morrow?
I'd like to hear what Kevin has to say about that. I'll tip over his analyzing of the land use ordinances again. But I can tell you that.
I would like to hear from Mr. O'Brien as well, but I think your preparation of what the attorney could enlighten us a little bit more on whether you're thinking that houses of worship of any kind can be anywhere. I think, I guess the question on the table is, houses of worship of any kind allowed anywhere in the borough?
Everywhere, right, yeah.
What is your interpretation?
I will not give an interpretation of the ordinances based on me not being an attorney. I can tell you the things that I hear about, especially in the news, trends in New Jersey are challenges to land use ordinances that address things like this. And we're not prohibiting them at all, we're setting the bulk requirements for if they do happen. I think there was actually a case just the other day that came out challenging New Jersey land use laws for the action of a resident turning their home into something that was akin to, I guess what we call in here, house of worship. So this is, this is something that, I'm not sure we can prohibit, to be honest with you, with love of an attorney's interpretation of something like that.
We don't prohibit, we don't prohibit. We have zoned areas in the borough where we allow it. So that's what I'm trying to get clarification on. And I agree with you, legally, can we say, can we restrict it to the areas that are already zoned? Because we're creating a master plan where once again, we're putting specific zones in for houses of worship. Or, you know, legally, that cannot be done, then obviously, you can't put, there's no point in putting it in the master plan. Yeah, so I don't know who can rule, Kevin, Lou, on whether we can restrict them to specific areas in the borough.
That is what we currently do. Currently, the houses of worship and other nonprofit entities currently have their own zones, called a community serving zone. And that zone has its own conditions. And what this ordinance does, from my reading, is it replaces, it allows those uses to be located in non-residential zones, so it expands that use to all other non-residential zones outside of the community serving zone where they're currently allowed.
Okay, but not into residential zones.
Not into residential.
So isn't there some ambiguity on letter D where it says, in bold print?
Yeah.
And/or houses of worship in non-residential zones and in residential zones, subject to the additional conditions that are.
Yeah, that's what I read.
So that's somewhat ambiguous to what the ordinance says, so it's a little bit of a waffle. Not a deliberate waffle, but a play on words. Go ahead, Mr. D.
No, Kevin, it's on page, I got it, page two. As I, I'm not studying this, I agree. I glanced at it, and, and what a lot of towns do is either set up specific zones for these for houses of worship. But other towns will say it's permitted anywhere as a permitted conditional use so long as you meet the conditions. If you don't meet the conditions, or if you do meet the conditions, you go to the planning board for whatever relief you need, if any. If you don't meet the conditions, or any one of them, it's a zoning board use merits application. Now, on the next to last, the bottom of the next to last page, as I read it, houses of worship, additional conditions applicable.
Where are you reading?
They're not numbered.
So it's the bottom of the next to the last page?
Yes.
C.
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 As I read this, a house of worship in addition to other nonprofit, the lot has to be an acre and a half, they have to comply with blah, 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 they're talking about the height, a lot of times a steeple. the height. A lot of times, a steeple are allowed, or whatever they call them now, are allowed to be higher than normal landscape buffers, bulk standards, and then it goes on and on. The way I think this reads is, if a church wants to be anywhere in-
A house of worship.
A house of worship, and complies with all of the conditions, they're permitted to, well, they can come to the planning board as a permitted use. If they don't comply, if they only have 1.2 acres, they got to come to the zoning board for relief on that. But a conditional use is a permitted use. Even if you don't comply with all the conditions, it gives an applicant a leg up, because they can say, look, 1.5, 1.4, what's the big deal? But it's up to the zoning board to get either grant relief or not. But this seems to say, now, I might have to read it word for word, but this seems to say, yes, houses of worship can be built anywhere in Kenilworth, assuming they comply with all the conditions. If they don't, then they come to the zoning board. And then their point is, well, we're house of worship. Kevin, it's probably, maybe inherently beneficial use, and it gives them a leg up on any variances that they may have.
So Lou, the macro, the macro question is, can a borough, a city, whatever, in the state of New Jersey restrict, I'm not saying ban, restrict the areas that houses of worship can be open, built, whatever the circumstance is?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
The question is, it's like in the old days when municipalities wondered, well, I have to allow an adult bookshop. Okay, so I'm going to find a little piece of land in industrial zone, and that's where I'm going to permit it. And when they get hammered in court, oh, we do permit it. It's over there. But here, with a, with a house of worship, you can do it-
Funny how they all went away.
They did. You can, you can, you allow them with conditions, reasonable conditions. You can't take a town like Kenilworth and say, you need 15 acres of land to put a house of worship. That's ridiculous. But it's, Kevin, I don't know. It might be, it might be worth thinking about if there are certain zones, conditional uses in certain zones, rather than conditional uses anywhere.
But again, we already have districts zoned for houses of worship. So I feel like we're, we're bringing something that we don't need to bring.
Well, there's something that I thought was a wild card for this. The religious, I'm going to try to read here.
It's a federal, it's a federal law. That talks about not unreasonably restricting. Like, if you have a perfect piece of land for, for a house of worship, and the town says, we don't want it, that's, that's an unreasonable restriction. But I see towns, towns, you can, you can do that. If we already have zones, and they're reasonable zones, you're not crazy time. You know, it's not like I got a postage stamp lot, and you can build a church there.
There's a house of worship in almost every area of the borough of Kenilworth.
I think it's as important, right? When we're talking about what you just said there, and if we have an outright ban in an area of town which it would be good for, it doesn't sound like we're out of the woods yet, based on what I'm hearing.
I wouldn't call it a ban. I would say, certainly, they're permitted.
Land use restriction.
But they're permitted in certain zones that we find reasonable and acceptable.
I hear what you're saying. There is then the law requirements in the residential areas, and we, I don't want to overstep any kind of statements that I'm going to make on this one, but there are other things that play outside of our own land use ordinances that have to be considered in this conversation. Not to say that we're trying to work around anything. It's just that there needs to be other factors considered. There are outside variables. So we've, we've taken the approach here to try to address this uniformly for all not-for-profits everywhere in the borough. Because I'm not so sure the full reliance can be put on where you are. I did not do my case law research, nor am I in a position to do some. So there were other things that we wanted to look at. Uniform treatment across the board for all not-for-profits was the way we decided to go. And if they are going to be in a residential area, whether we like it or not, they could still become part of a residential area. There are requirements now, and setbacks and things that we thought protected the neighbors, if you will, from, not that they need protection, maybe that's not the right word, but create less of a nuisance. There are parking requirements and setback requirements and things you need to do with the garbage at that point that we thought were reasonable if we're going to be in a residential zone. So there are things here happening that create new, I guess, conditional uses.
Well, you're talking about in residential zone, you're talking about lots, parking, lighting, buffering. But it opens the door slightly. If you say we're going to put it everywhere, if you meet the conditions, if they can, they come up for the zoning board as a church or as a house of worship, unless it's an absolute joke situation, they, they can make a good case in terms of inherently beneficial. It's, it's worship, it's whatever, and it might be a little difficult, I don't know. It might be difficult to say no if it's a close call. The best way, I think, off the top of my head, if we now allow, we now permit houses of worship in certain zones.
In one zone.
In one zone. Where is that?
Is that what they've known?
That is all over the map.
Yeah.
Each individual use, like Saint Teresa, that's-
So the houses of worship that already exist is the zone in which a house of worship can-
Correct.
Be established, right?
Right.
So an existing house of worship, hypothetically speaking, if an existing house of worship was on the corner of 10th Street and the Boulevard, and it's no longer going to be a house of worship, they go out of business, or whatever that proper term is, another house of worship could come in there or would, at that point, be abolished.
Another house of worship could go in there.
Okay. Unless an ordinance says that if this, if these houses of worship, I don't know if it's the right terminology to say go out of business. It's not nice to say, right? But I don't know the words to say. But let's say if there was an ordinance in place that says, if a house of worship is no longer in existence, no other house of worship can go in there. Is that something an ordinance could?
That'd be a tough stretch.
A tough, tough stretch.
And I'm winging here, but I've been involved with this, because you can't, you can't say basically, okay, we're going to, we're going to determine that that's abandoned. You know, if they lock, if they lock the door, and the next day, Kenilworth says, okay, now it's abandoned. I don't think that applies.
No, no.
No, no. I'm not saying for, or, again, I'm just trying to create a scenario.
Well, there's actually, that scenario happened in the borough of Kenilworth. There was a house of worship on North 20th Street between Sheridan Avenue and North 20th Street. And I used to play inside of it because it had been abandoned.
Okay.
And it eventually was knocked down, and actually, a residential house was built.
But is it, was it still a house, was it still zoned for houses of worship?
Well, this goes back pretty far, Lou, so.
It's still zoned, yeah.
Isn't that reasonable? And if I may, Chairman, I was not asked to review this ordinance.
Okay.
Specifically. And I had a chance to take a cursory look at it. And I'm just wondering, what are they trying to solve? Because it's already addressed. It's already allowed in certain, in particular places. You can't have them anywhere else in the borough. And this expands the use to everywhere, which, as Lou has pointed out, under the LUPA, which is what the council refers to, Religious Land Use and Incarcerated Persons Act of 1996.
He puts this behind the-
I mean, that's how we wrote this ordinance back in 2015, knowing the potential for religious land use. We're on the record. Knowing the potential for- For somebody, for a new application to come in and being aware that that's a possibility. And we addressed it as best we could by designating his own, which was in complete conformance with the LUPA. And this does expand it throughout the borough.
So that goes back to 2015. But recently, there was an ordinance that we set forth that was approved by the governing body, that there would be no houses of worship and/or funeral parlors on the Boulevard, right? Specifically on the Boulevard. That's from one end of town to the other. So back to the point that I was asking before, if a house of worship on the Boulevard goes out of business, and they are, can someone else come in there at that point and say, I would like to have a house of worship there because it's already a house of worship? Kind of like, if there's a gas station, okay, I want to put a gas station in there because this guy's going out of business.
So pre-existing.
Pre-existing.
It depends upon, it depends upon the facts. And the first fact is, blood zone is in it. If the C S community serving zone, which specifically allows houses of worship, then they continue and evolve. However, what this board and the governing body did with the ordinance prohibiting houses of worship along the Boulevard in a non-C S zone emphasized that these were uses that the borough specifically prohibited. To back up a little bit, there are several different kinds of uses in the ordinance. First is what's specifically allowed, what's specifically permitted. Then there's what's specifically prohibited. Then there are conditional uses that have to meet the conditions. And everything other than those three fall in that gray area of not permitted, but not prohibited specifically. The borough ordinance says every one of those applications in a gray area is specifically prohibited.
Good.
But it doesn't enunciate. So what the board and the council did in that ordinance was to emphasize and put in the code that this would not be an allowed use. So somebody coming in with an application for new use, a use variance, for a house of worship or funeral home on the Boulevard, the board could look at that as a prohibited use and say, well, the borough says, no, we don't want these. And while anybody can make an application for anything, the fact that the borough specifically prohibits them is an obstacle an applicant has to overcome.
Okay.
So can I add something here? One of the things also, I mean, we're focused in houses of worship, but this is more expanded than that. It applies to not-for-profits as well. So I'll give you a scenario. Somebody's going to take a pit bull rescue and do it in their home. And then they get licensed by the state, if you need such a license, to be a pit bull rescue, and they're still operating out of their home. This would create requirements for them to have 1.5 acres and all these things happening. These are people doing things in their home, not necessarily coming to town hall, starting businesses on the Boulevard. So there, there were concerns about the impact to the residents around these not-for-profits when these activities start flipping homes into not-for-profits. So there, there was concern, and that's part of the impetus here. Really, what is the impact to the neighbors surrounding those not-for-profits?
How do you convert a pit bull, you know, not-for-profit into a residential neighborhood?
So let's say you're, you're just doing it, right? You have one in the home, two in the home, three in the home. Who's taking notice of any of that? And you could be licensed as a rescue, but you're operating that business out of your home. I don't know-
But that's a violation of borough code.
Yeah.
I mean, we're trying to fix things. We already have violations, and we're starting to allow those things to happen and then restrict them. And I'm missing something here.
So, Mr. David, are you saying that everything, that's in place already, and we're not enforcing that law?
No, I don't know that that's in place. I'm just trying to, I'm just taking an example and saying if someone-
I think it's a general term. I was going to ask the same question. What, what is the significance? Because I see it highlighted throughout as nonprofit chartered membership organizations.
The vets or the PVA, or, and they're already in the CS up all those buildings.
But your point may be home occupation.
Home occupation is addressed.
If you're doing pit bulls.
Yeah, it's not allowed.
That may be, yeah.
It's an extreme example, but yeah.
It's extreme, and it's definitely not allowed. We have a whole section of our home ordinance on home occupation.
So you convert your, so let's say you convert your home into a study.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
You convert your home to a study now, and now it's-
Study.
Any kind of furthering of knowledge, and we'll say collegiate studies. You're doing tutoring, whatever it's going to be. And you've converted your home into this operation. We want, and it's a not-for-profit.
The entire home.
I'm not sure what would divide the sleeping area to the rest of the home.
Well, our ordinance allows a certain percentage of the home to be used for for-profit activities as a home occupation. And people can tutor or do their music lessons or dance lessons as they wish, provided that they meet the ordinance requirements of extra.
But it's already in place.
And it's already in place. I mean, this one says a lot must be 1.5 acres. Where the hell are you going to get 1.5 acres of this town?
That's, that's-
Well, that was your idea.
Well, that's a condition for a house of worship.
Well, you could buy three or four houses in that.
You'd have to buy 12 houses.
What's that?
Fifty by hundred.
You don't have to do anything.
So that's half the block.
Half the block.
The house of worship exists a lot.
Again, are we just going to take a vote on this, whether it's consistent or not consistent, or we've got enough debate?
The council tomorrow.
What's that?
It's up for the council tomorrow.
Yeah. And, and listen, the, and I, and I've stated this, no matter where people may think we are with friendships, or people getting aggravated with other people, whatever it is, it's hard when the governing body puts something in an ordinance and presents it to the board, and the board has to make these hard decisions to kick it back and say, well, it's not consistent with the master plan. It's already in place, and we need more time. We want to work in harmony, and that was something that I said last week, and that's something that Mr. Morrow was saying this week. And I just find it that each one of these sections right now seems to already be in place, and I think it needs, I think it needs more tweaking, or more time, from my perspective. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's what I feel. General, oh, Mr. Scudary.
Everything we talked about the master plan, we've always talked about improving the residential areas for our residents. So whether legally, somewhere down the road, we could be on the hook, I don't really think that should make a difference to us right now. It's just whether, you know, this would definitely be a detriment to a neighborhood. Like, if you took my street to where Set Drive, where the lots are deep, you could buy seven houses. And what happens if I live next to that? Now I got to deal with traffic on a Sunday day of worship. Take me two hours to get out of my street. So I think it would hurt the resident wherever, residents wherever we put that. And I think we really put a lot of emphasis in our master plan of trying to make the neighborhoods nicer and, you know, more, more of a neighborhood we own, protecting our residents. So I can't see how this could possibly be aligned with our master plan.
Okay. There's also something to be said that when we look up, you know, different case law or different towns and what's happening, like the reference to Jersey City in Mr. Morrow's defense again, you know, we're looking at a town that has a lot of people compared to our town, and, you know, all right, a million, there's a million dollars that they can't collect. And if you take a look at that and amateurize it and ratio to our town, would that be 250 to 300,000 based on not collecting? So I recognize that as well. But if that's the case, then 250 to 300,000 is also significant. But when you, when you take a look at what's going on now, in our small town, I'm wondering if, with a little bit more thought, could there be some restrictions on, based on our, what do we have, 7,500 residents and how many square feet, how many miles do we have? We are already over congested with maybe houses of worship, funeral parlors, not-for-profits. Maybe there should be more thought on that. And with that being said, I'm thinking that this is also another item that is not consistent with our master plan. And I'm just going to throw this out there to the board and to the governing body. Maybe before, and I don't know how this works, and maybe the professionals and Mr. Rego could help me with this. Maybe before the governing body is spending a ton of money on writing up these ordinances in time and this and that, the same way that maybe that you have a meeting with the permit department, the zoning department, and the town attorney, maybe create a committee here that maybe we could work together and say, maybe we could iron this out in such a fashion that we don't have to spend so much time and money to get to a point where we all think it might work for the town. So that's just a thought process, you know. So anyway, that's my thought process. Anyone else?
Mr. O'Brien, can you have a subcommittee of the planning board without making a harm to meet with council or something like that?
Yes.
Couldn't do that, right?
Just think about the expense behind- Just think about the expense behind that. I mean, all these ordinances had to cost a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of everybody's time. And I know these councilmen don't make a lot of money to spend all that time going off with all this, and we make that much less, so.
I know from my personal experience in my day job, we have, and I, Mr. O'Brien, this is where I have it here, we have TRC meetings, technical review committee meetings for applications, and you get all the bugs worked out. And within developer tip, you know, you get all the bugs worked out, so then when you come to the board, any board, you know what to expect, and there's no argument, and there's no drama, and it's just like, okay, what are we going to vote on? So, I mean, I agree that, you know, maybe that could be like a, you know, not a bargaining thing, but, you know, with two bodies that, you know, have different views but on the same topic, you can iron all that out so that nobody's at surprise, you know what I mean? Well, you know, you can review this within 45 days, but the 45 days doesn't drop, you know, same with the two meetings, it really only syncs in with 14 days, you know, or something like that, so just, it could work out, it could work out pretty good.
Is this a trust board?
Say what?
Even a call as to, is this a trust board?
Okay.
Well, that's, the governing body would have to. On this topic, Rich, I would love to collaborate more with this body. Your point about the quorum duly noted, I guess, two people, chair and the vice chair possibly confering with me, I'm very open to that on everything.
We can.
Not specifically, I guess you have a larger proof than the council, governing body.
Yeah, you're right.
But that aside, I'd say that in spirit of working together, not necessarily with respect to this ordinance, I would like to note, the governing body is what sets policy, and that's why we're duly elected by the town to set that policy. So when there's a line of what's being crossed as far as setting policy and what the board says is consistent with the actions the board legally has to take, there is a separation there. So let's just have that understood. Love to work together with you guys more closely, absolutely, but there is a set line there between policymaking and the activities of the board, which is not to set policy.
Well, but that's not necessarily.
I disagree, Jim.
I'm sorry?
On that note, the governing body, be it whoever they are, it's the borough, the borough of the town and municipality hires professionals. He wrote the ordinances, don't you think he would know the ordinances? The building officials, the construction, zoning officers, they enforce the ordinances. I would say that they would know it too. So I mean, whoever the governing body is, whoever the background is, I know as a manager, I don't know everything, but I got some ordinance I rely on, and that's how I go to.
I guess what we're doing with this is when we're setting a policy, we make decisions to hire those professionals you're talking about, confer with the attorneys. This is not just willy-nilly. We're not, I mean, the impression I'm getting here is that we may be seen as going willy-nilly on these ordinances.
Not at all. If I gave you that impression, not at all. What I'm saying is, is that you, the governing body at this juncture, to me, has a idea, and you come up with a synopsis of what you think might be best for the borough. I don't think you're doing anything that's going to be detrimental, but I don't think maybe at the level of, with respect of the councils, of the people on council, have the wherewithal as the planning board, because we sit in a different arena than most of you guys and women, whoever's up there.
Yes, sir. There's, I would say, two points. I think there are times where it's beneficial to obviously work in a committee format and, you know, not be on the public record, you know, you have to obviously advertise and all that when there's, when there's quorums involved. So that, I think, was a good recommendation or suggestion for ways that we can collaborate in the future. But in addition, we have work sessions, and we have a council liaison, and to me, if the borough, if there's an issue that's happening, whether it be, you know, some violations or whatever, at a work session, Mr. Morrow could come to the work session and say, hey, guys, we're having an issue with whatever it is, with short-term rentals, and, you know, what do you guys think about this? You know, does anyone think that there may already be code on the book that would help us enforce this?
Then bring it back to the council.
At a work session before we get through all the effort of, as you said, spending money on legal fees to write ordinances and so on. This is a great idea. I don't agree that this last ordinance that we discussed is inconsistent with the plan, and I'll vote as such, and you'll vote the way you all want. I do not agree. But I do agree in increasing collaboration to build the harmony that Rich has been seeking.
Yeah, I think, as an example, these three proposed ordinances are a perfect example. The first one, from what, two meetings ago, just by a five-minute conversation, Kevin picked up that there was an error in the language, and that was just, you know, you know, in the meeting that we were supposed to review it and pass it along. So we helped with that. And ordinance 27, and even in ordinance 28, as I'm seeing it right now, it looks like there's already stuff on the books that handles it. So that's just from, this turned into a workshop, you know, and just from the knowledge that's here, I think we were able to bring that to the town council's attention. And it's working. And that comes out of the fact that last meeting, we made the decision to hold it, have this special meeting, and, you know, I think it's working, so.
Good point. Good point.
Yes, sir. I would like to point out to the council that this body, planning board, is both a legislative body and a judicial body. Legislative in that it makes policy, and that's called the master plan. Only the planning board has any authority to write a master plan, which sets the policy for land use within the borough.
Of which you're part of.
And it is, and it is also judicial, and then it makes decisions. You take a vote, you make a decision, application up or down, ordinance up or down, whatever it is. So this body has a dual entity, and policy is one of them.
I'll clarify my statement, Kevin duly noted what you said there. The policy I was talking about is everything other than the land use here, and we have other things at play that combine with the land use, which is why we need to be in harmony. So I clarify my statement, thank you for making your point, I was not trying to diminish any power of this board. It is concerning, though, that you consider it a legislative and judicial piece.
Oh, I know.
But we, well, you just said that, didn't you? Okay, well, whoever says it.
It doesn't originate.
And our system here has planning, zoning, everything combined under appointed positions, not elected or anything like that, it just, it seems pretty concentrated, but that's how this structure is.
These are the laws of the state of New York.
Well, combined with how the borough has applied them.
They can't do anything different than what the state allows us to do.
Correct, and the state allows structures of boards to be different than what we, we had a board structured different decades ago, didn't we?
We had a zoning board and a planning board that were separate.
Yeah, so things happen, right?
That's allowed under state law.
I know, yeah, exactly. There are things allowed under state law. We have one option, there are other options. I'm doing my homework, Kevin, you all be very busy. But I understand exactly what you're saying here. I appreciate everybody's comments.
Do you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so are we going to have, one way or the other, move to either deem this consistent or inconsistent? And I just want to make one last point before somebody does that, is that I feel it's inconsistent in that it's bringing something to the entirety of the borough.
Expanding use.
Right, from what we already have. If we were more restrictive, I might have a different opinion, but for now, increasing these things to be allowed, even with conditions throughout the entire borough, I do not feel is consistent with our master plan. So with that, I'll make a motion that we deem this particular ordinance not consistent with the master plan.
For the reasons that have been discussed.
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Pantina. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bissarum?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
No.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mathio?
Yes.
Mr. Liddati?
Yes.
Mr. Pellela?
Yes.
And Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
Okay, so that concludes the ordinances. Now, of course, because it's a regular meeting, even though it's a special meeting, we have some comments for the good of the board. Anyone?
Mr. Scadari, another meeting, and I'm very pleased.
Okay, Mr. Scadari, thank you, and have a Merry Christmas. Mr. Scadari, I just wanted to let you know that we're going to talk about a little bit here tonight about whether or not we're going to have a meeting because there's no applications, but we'll inform you later on, okay? Any comments for the good of the board? Okay, seeing none.
I make a motion that we open the meeting to the public.
All in favor? Anyone from the public wanting to speak? Seeing none?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we adjourn, I would like to talk about real quick the next year, and this is something that we were talking about. As you know, we have a reorg meeting on January 11, right? And that's at 7:00 PM. And there is, does everybody have the dates of the meetings in front of you? Or if you don't have them, Kathy could get them out to you. And does anybody have any problems with those meetings? They're still on the Thursday and this and that?
No. If I may, we do have time on this, we have until the January meeting. I just got this from Kathy, I haven't had a chance to take a look at it.
Okay.
Can we take action on this in January?
On the dates?
Calendar.
Oh, on the calendar? We can, I just wanted to put it out there that this is the proposed calendar.
Yeah, if anybody has a problem, we should.
Yeah.
Get it up here.
Because you know what happens at early on those months, in January, February, March, a lot of people are on vacation and doing different things, and we want to make sure we have quorum, and we want to make sure we do business, and yes, I will be here, but if I'm still here. And that's all I wanted to really state, and what else? We may or may not have a meeting, when's that meeting?
It'll be next Thursday.
The 14th.
So what do we have on for that day?
No applications.
No applications?
The 12th.
No resolutions, no.
No application, no resolutions, no nothing. Do we need to meet?
Sounds like we don't.
Sounds like we have no meeting. Nothing to do.
Christmas dinner.
Christmas dinner, the 14th. Okay, with that being said, I think, Cap, you may.
I'm just going to write a memo, an app to the council, just saying, consistent, not consistent, and not consistent, that's all I'm saying. I don't have to state the reasons next semester for 20 seconds, just that we're.
We had discussion, it's not consistent with the master plan.
You only do it with two.
Yeah, the first one, we already did.
I have to let the council know, though.
Yeah.
I do not let them know.
And so.
Send out a memo or letter.
We're also going to send out a memo to everyone, including the governing body, that there will be no meeting for the planning board on.
December 14.
December what?
14th.
14th, because there's no applications. Unless something comes up, guys, you think we need to meet, workshop, anything, we're fine. We're fine. Okay.
Motion to adjourn, then.
Motion adjourned by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Liddati. All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, sir.
Happy New Year.